Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, January twenty fifth of two thousand and twenty. And the first order of business would be the roll call. Candy, when you're ready.
Okay. Jensen. Lagaki.
Here.
Miaski.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Tukowski.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
Doom.
Here.
Haley.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Okay, we have eleven Alders present. Ben Agus is absent and excused.
All right, thank you. Minutes, minutes and reports are in the packet. And nobody has signed up for the public comment period. There are no communications and presentations. I believe we'll have one at the next meeting. We're working on forming a alcohol policy committee, and I think that they're going to present at the next meeting. There are a couple items in the consent agenda. You might have noticed we sent out the minutes this afternoon. Sorry about that. If you need to look at them, I can pull them on the screen. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move. Second.
Motion by Tukowski and second by Reeves. Would anybody like anything acted on separately on the consent agenda? Are there none? All in favor, say aye.
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 And are there any opposed? None opposed that motion carries. All right. Next item is all business approving formation of a diversity equity and inclusion. Task force. And this one came out of the Community Affairs Council Policy. And who would like to lead this one off? All the person Lagaki or Haley?
Jane, would you like to take it?
You know, I'm slightly under the weather, and I think most of what we need to talk about was last week. I would love if you did it, Ben.
Sure. Yeah, this is the second reading on creation of a diversity equity and inclusion task force. Let's see, we've had some minor changes to the land, to the wording. But otherwise, yeah, much of this is covered last meeting. So I will move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Haley and a second by Lagaki. Anything else you want to add? Anybody?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Is that all the person hot?
Yeah, last time we discussed this, Attorney Dregney had some items he wanted clarified about proper titling of this. Was it a committee? Was it a ad hoc, was it whatever? And also, there were some questions about to whom this would be reporting. Is it been clarified on this? Do we know what we want to call it?
Be happy to respond if that's helpful.
Please do.
Thank you.
Yes, so the verbiage in the very first under the resolution of the common council should address your first issue, Fred, that it is an actual recommendation from Community Affairs Council Policy that this committee becomes an independent task force. So it's not an ad hoc, it's not anything. It is created by the common council. And then the second issue, if you go to the therefore, that the verbiage is in the very last sentence. And by the way, there's a typo there. If we could change the word with, it is anticipated the task force will present updates to Community Affairs Council Policy during the two years that it will be. So that they will not necessarily report to, but be a part of, and that is the base. And if Community Affairs asks that, task force will happily report to Community Affairs and then present to the community and the committee of the whole in fall of two thousand and twenty-three is the plan, Fred.
Okay. Is there a sunset on this committee like twenty twenty-three, and then we would have a process to continue it if we chose to?
That could be a recommend, so the the task force will create recommendations that the city may or may not adapt, adapt. And it's really meant to be a work group that truly looks at where diversity, equity, inclusion is at in our city. And to be honest, hopefully, they will work themselves into a job that these things will be adapted and taken on. But technically, the strategic plan and this group as it's being established to have yearly events is meant to be time limited.
Okay, so that when I see that it will report to the committee as a whole in fall of two thousand and twenty-three, that report would then indicate an end to the task force?
It would, it would indicate an official end to that task force that was given that directive to create a strategic plan. It is the hope that the strategic plan will bring actual establishment and clarity and very, very clear organization where our diversity and equity and inclusion of resources and what we're doing will will be identified by that strategic plan and then hopefully put in place with those recommendations.
Thank you, Jean.
President Hirsch.
Yes, thanks. Um, again, and I don't know if this is to Jean or Ben, who are just the CACP, who on the city staff have you identified to be on there? Because I see there's still two people, which, you know, our staff is pretty already thin with time. And then second, there's a couple other typos that I'll point out. But that's, that's the first one.
Regina, given, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Regina, given this is a grassroots effort, we ask for a minimum of two people from the city, people who would truly have the bandwidth and the interest and the ability. Common sense says that human resources personnel makes sense and knowing AJ's workload, I had a a nice discussion with her on email that she would be happy to be a point person, probably couldn't be part of the actual working groups, but she has put her support around being a point person for this. And have not done a lot of, don't want to bring this along as a requirement and because the different areas will be addressed at some point, though all naturally rotate through. If we're really looking at the areas and the and the work that is done. And so that's, that's meant to be a working group that doesn't become another big meeting for city staff and all, but did ask since the library is such a hub, also thought that that would be a good, a good resource. But to be honest, the grassroots idea of it, we want to have key people in the community, smart invited people as well as those people who do want to volunteer, because this is, this is important to them, and they may have the bandwidth to work on it. Does that answer your question, Regina?
Well, yes and no. And maybe because most committees are not as fluid as what is being proposed here. So I mean, it's a good experiment and having a task force that is more fluid as opposed to something that's more determinate. I'm just, I just don't want this to fail if there isn't two city staff that have the capacity to be part of it, because you say a minimum of two.
Yes.
I guess I would change it to a minimum of one. And then if you can have two, that'd be great. If you have three, that's great, but I'm just making sure we're not setting it up for failure. And so that's would be my recommendation with to have a minimum of one city staff. You know, as opposed to two, and then the more the merrier.
I think you have some wisdom there and totally might make sense to make an amendment there. For a change, whatever we need to do.
Sure, I will make the amendment. I will make the amendment after I point out there's on page two, there's another typo. The last paragraph under overview, it should be, it is anticipated the task force will be present its recommendations as opposed to this T. It should be a I in front of that T, that last sentence. And then the last, the next page again, when you talk about therefore, it's the same typo. It should be will present as opposed to with. And so those are the three kind of typos that I saw, and I'm sure Joyce probably figured out some more if I didn't talk about it.
Those were exactly what I found. Thanks.
But with that said, I would like to make a motion to amend this to make it as minimal of one city staff. I would just.
Second.
Second by all the person Jensen I heard. Any more discussion on that? And Candy, did you get the typos?
Yes, I've got them. I'll make those changes.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we have a motion in a second to amend it to have a minimum of one city staff member. Any discussion? There are none, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 And any opposed? All right, that motion carries. So that takes us back to the the original motion to approve as amended. Any questions or comments on that? Karen Dunn, all in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Want to pose that motion does carry. All right, thank you. And the only thing I would suggest is if you're looking at doing a strategic plan as you organize, if you think there's going to be a budget request, try to get that done during the, before the budget cycle. So we can make sure we have the money in two thousand and twenty-three that you might need to do a strategic planning process. And I think I have a couple that might help you, you know, keep that cost down.
Thank you.
But thank you for all your hard work on that one. Next item is R eight of two thousand and twenty-two. And I'll pull that one up here. And that one's coming from the the Plan Commission. All person.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is R eight of two thousand and twenty-two approving a conditional use permit. Request for a group daycare at fourteen twenty-four U.S. Highway fifty-one, one thirty-eight in Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Second.
Second by all the person Doom, all the person Caravello.
And as we, I believe we discussed at last meeting, this is a conditional use permit for group daycare at the location listed, which is most people probably know as the former Pizza Hut location and good use of that property to me.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from Alders? Karen Dunn, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next item is also coming from the Plan Commission. All the person Caravello.
And this one is R nine of two thousand and twenty-two approving an extraterritorial jurisdictional land division for property located at twenty sixty-nine Williams Drive in the town of Pleasant Springs, Dane County, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Second.
Second by all the person Doom, all the person Caravello.
And this one is a land division request for that address to split the property into, I believe it's from one lot into three lots for single family residential use.
All right, any questions or comments? Karen Dunn, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion does carry. The next several items are kind of lumped together. They were all at the Finance Committee earlier tonight, and I'll let maybe what I think what we'll do is we'll just have only person Schumacher, maybe give a quick overview, turn it over to David Ferris from Ellers, and then we can just go through them one by one. I think that's probably the most efficient way of doing this. All the person Schumacher.
So the series of these are based on items that we approved during the last CIP cycle. So these are the initial resolutions that for general obligation bonds and that were required by state statute in order to address or at least initially address what the the money is intended to be used for. And there are some benefits in in that of doing bonds versus other things that that Dave can get into. Do you want me just to have, or do you want Dave to do the the little fill-in bits on on why we're we're doing these like individually and all that, or just plow ahead with one of the resolutions?
Whatever your desire, and I can put them up as he goes through them, or you have any thoughts, David? How would you like to present this?
Same, maybe just a little.
Oh, yeah, why don't, why don't I give that little brief intro to this? As the council knows, typically, the city has used general obligation notes to fund its projects. As we went through the last CIP, there's some projects that are identified that had longer term useful lives as well as higher dollar amounts. And so when we did some of the modeling of the tax rate last year, it made more sense to try to extend out the repayment schedule so that the tax levy wasn't really getting crunched for the next ten years. Also providing you flexibility to keep doing your projects over the, over the future years. You know, packing the five million dollars of bonds that you're potentially doing into a ten-year period really puts a strain on the tax rate. And the one thing that we did as part of the financial management plan and and just addressing the CIP this last year was really hitting on a stable tax rate for debt as well as providing yourself flexibility to do your projects and be able to do those future projects without the tax rate bouncing all over. So we're moving forward with bonds, but bonds come with a little bit more hoops to jump through. So typically, when we approve the notes, you would approve a total amount. There'd be a purpose to it, but you didn't have to approve an amount per purpose. Per state statutes, there's about thirty-four different purposes that bonds could be used for. And so we have captured as much of the CIP as possible to be funded with general obligation bonds. There is a little bit about three hundred thousand dollars that will be maybe a bank note or state trust fund loan. And there's also a taxable portion of a TIF eight project that is tied to a developer agreement that that will be funded through a different method as well, just because we don't, we don't have any other taxable items as in this issue. So as far as the items that are in front of you, they're broken up by purpose. So we have a street purpose that is going to cover your, your re, your reconstructions. We do have those three projects broken up between what's a ten-year project and what's a twenty-year project, and so those are incorporated in the repayment schedules. There also is a sewerage project purpose, and that is your stormwater portion of those street projects as well. That just happens to fall under the the term sewerage. We do have a couple pieces of fire equipment that are going to be funded with bonds, because that's eligible. There's four hundred thousand for parks and public grounds projects. There's two hundred and twenty-five thousand for a river park project. And then there's seven hundred thousand, which are two items in today for the riverfront project, which I believe is a bridge and some amenities. So the reason that these are broken out is that you're required to actually approve in bonds, you have to approve not only the purpose, but the amount not to exceed amount. So these amounts have been determined. The bond council has reviewed what we have in each purpose, and they agree that they fit these purposes. So these are in front of you today to consider as far as the initial resolution to approve these before we actually set a sale.
Great, thank you. Are there any initial questions? Okay, hearing none, then we can get into the actual resolutions, and I'll pull up the first one here. So we'll go back to all the person Schumacher.
All right. Resolution R fourteen, two thousand and twenty-two, the initial resolution authorizing two million eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in general obligation bonds for street improvement projects. So moved.
Second.
Second by all the person Reeves. Any discussion on this one?
Mayor.
All the person hot, go ahead.
I was wondering if maybe Rodney could fill us in on what the two million eight hundred and fifteen thousand would be for.
Sure, yeah, and you might recall this is stuff that was in our CIP, so everything is consistent with that. Rodney, are you available?
I'm available but not prepared to really answer specific questions. I know this was generated as a result of the CIP that was approved last fall. It's related to the street projects that were associated with that CIP approval.
Yeah, I think the major streets were what Milwaukee Street.
Milwaukee Street, Academy Street, Ben Wade Circle, Row, Row, Silverado.
Jefferson Street Bridge.
Truman, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Very none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Next one, all the person Schumacher.
All right, resolution R fifteen, two thousand and twenty-two, the initial resolution authorizing five hundred and twenty thousand dollars general obligation bonds for sewerage projects. So moved.
Second.
Second by all the person Doom. And any discussion on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next one, all the person Schumacher.
All right, resolutions R sixteen, two thousand and twenty-two, initial resolution authorizing three hundred and sixty thousand dollars general obligation bonds for equipment of the fire department. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Oh, is that President Hirsch, or who was that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on this one?
Once again, would it be okay if we describe what we're paying for with this?
Yes, we have two hundred and sixty-eight thousand about of portable radios and then an eighty-two thousand dollar command vehicle replacement.
Any other questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next one, all the person Schumacher.
All right, resolution R seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two, the initial resolution authorizing four hundred thousand dollars general obligation bonds for parks and public grounds projects. So moved.
Second.
Was that Tukowski?
No, Hirsch again.
Oh, sorry, I'm scrolling through my screen here. Thank you. Any discussion on this one?
Just if I could, Tim.
All the person Jensen, go ahead.
Yeah, just to verify this is for the bridge, the pedestrian bridge.
No, that was in the other one. This one here, David, I think this was stuff at Shefalker Park, if I remember right.
Yeah, it looks like there's Shefalker Park. There's a few of those and Virgin Lake Trail, Virgin Lake Trail.
Yeah.
Let's see, what's this one?
It does say pedestrian bridge.
Looks like some engineering for Manet Park.
Yeah, so this would be the. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Next one is all the person Schumacher.
Resolution R eighteen, two thousand and twenty-two, the initial resolution authorizing two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars general obligation bonds for River Park project. So moved.
All second.
A second by Caravello. Any discussion on this one?
Mr. Mayor.
All the person hot, go ahead.
I was just wondering if we could describe what this two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars would be purchasing.
Sure, you have that in front of you, David?
Yes, it looks like the RD River Park Engineering, RD Environmental Assessment and the RD River Park Construction.
This is actually, isn't this, if I remember right, this is the trails, the bridge, and and all the things that we voted on last week with those improvements.
Okay.
You know, like the lighting and the solar panel, if I remember right, this is what this is for. If I'm not, if I'm not pleased, you know, correct me, but I think that number sounds familiar from what we approved two weeks ago.
I believe you are correct, Mayor President.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item, all the person Schumacher.
All right, resolution R nineteen, two thousand and twenty-two, the initial resolution authorizing seven hundred thousand dollars general obligation bonds for community development projects in tax incremental district number eight. So moved.
Second.
Second by President Hirsch. Any discussion on this one?
And if I'm not mistaken, this is, isn't this like the TIF money for the remediation? But I'm not positive on that one.
This is TIF money for a pedestrian bridge and trail and amenities.
Okay.
And some of this was offset by the grants.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
Is there anything in this seven hundred thousand dollars that was going to be applied to further testing of the next phases for pollution?
I don't believe so.
So, so there is an environmental remediation project that you approved in your CIP, but that has ties to a developer.
But that has ties to a developer agreement. And so we can't use general obligation bonds for those, we have to use a taxable. Either geo bond or a taxable note, so that is not included in this amount.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. This last one, Candy, I think we're gonna take a roll call vote on this one. So you can get prepared for that. All the person Schumacher.
All right, resolution R twenty 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 two. The resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issues. So moved.
Second.
Second by all the person Reeves. Any discussion on this one? All right, here none. So Candy, if you want to do a roll call on this one.
Certainly, Lagaki.
Aye.
Mijaski.
Aye.
Reeves.
Aye.
Hunt.
Aye.
Schumacher.
Aye.
Tocowski.
Aye.
Caravella.
Aye.
Doom.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
And Jensen.
Aye.
See, love it in favor.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, next item, resolution. Twenty six, this one also came from Finance Committee. This is from our last meeting two weeks ago. All the person Schumacher.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Our twenty six twenty twenty two authorizing and directing proper city officials. To revise the fund balance policy. So moved.
Second.
Second by all the person Doom, all the person Schumacher.
All right, so we looked into how we handle the the contingency fund in there and. There was that one year, well, the COVID year where we had actually like hard budgeted. Money in just in case things weren't going kind of the way that we did. And that was an odd year out, but otherwise it's kind of been. Done roughly as a percentage of the of the general fund budget. Within a few fun numbers in there. So this just adjusts that a little bit, it. More defines the the percentage range of that general fund amount that we would. Get within the materials in there, there was one little example calculation of what what that would have amounted to in there. So the the low and highs on there end up pretty close to where we would normally budget. These contingency funds from. That was about kicks in something else about when unassigned fund balances. Are above or below twenty percent, so there's another bit in there.
All right, any questions or comments on this one?
If I could.
Sure, all the person Johnson.
So if I, if if I'm reading through this and understanding it correctly, this is basically giving us more flexibility. Yep. Is it correct? General statement, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
And then kind of instead of having to always each year go through the mechanization of. Carving out that, reserving that amount of money out there that this sort of goes into an autopilot. But we're, we are allowed to revisit it if we chose, if we choose to do so. So again, like you say, it gives us more flexibility in how we handle this contingency fund.
Sounds good.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. And any opposed? That motion carries. All right, this next item. We were supposed to have it on the Finance Committee meeting, but it didn't make it on the agenda, so we brought it right here. And basically, what we're asking to do is to hire an interim finance director. And Director Gillingham has found somebody, he was actually in the office today. So we are looking for approval of this and I'll let Director Gillingham kind of run through it first. And then hopefully consider making a motion after that. And before I do that, I did want to thank David Ferris for joining us tonight. Very helpful in the absence of having a finance director here, so thanks to David. Go ahead, AJ, take your away.
Okay, so we're doing the same thing that we did approximately two years ago. By bringing in a third party to be able to handle the transactionary approvals as well as continuing to keep the department moving forward. So we're looking at the fiscal impact of this to not exceed thirty six thousand dollars in total. The budget for the former finance director for ten weeks of wages and benefits would be approximately. Twenty seven thousand eight thirty one fifty one, so the difference and total impact would be eighty one sixty eight forty nine. Provided we continue to keep this individual on with us for a total of ten weeks. We did have a very successful interview on Monday, we actually had two of them. So we do have a candidate in the pocket that's coming in tomorrow for a second interview. But keeping in mind that there's an extensive background that has to background process that takes place. You're looking at two to three weeks for that to happen and then a three to four week notice to their employer, so. We think that the ten weeks that we're asking for here of wages is realistic. And we've talked to the individual and he is willing to stay on for the ten weeks, so I'm looking for the approval. Of a not to exceed of thirty six thousand.
All right, did I hear a motion?
I made a motion to approve.
Okay. Who made the second? I'm sorry.
I did.
Really?
Okay, Ben can.
All right, so there's a motion and a second. And yeah, we just add, you know. The purpose of having somebody in here on the interim basis is to help provide the oversight and the separation of duties. Which when we get into the audit later in the year, you know, that's usually one of the things the auditors look for. We can't really have somebody doing the work and approving their own work. Some of that can be delegated to myself, but having a finance person in there really. You know, helps us better understand and really can go back and cross-reference against what was budgeted. When the checks are processed. The other thing I've asked, Mike Arnold is his name, I've asked him to do. Is to go through and be able to provide us an update on the ARPA. You know, we still have a conversation to, you know, to continue on that. And there has been some. Some new direction given by the feds, so Mike is gonna go through and. He'll probably be working with David at Ellers and possibly Baker Tilly and then some of our trade associations. To kind of put together an updated plan, so when the committee, the whole reconvenes. They'll understand, you know, what the rules were before and what they will be going forward now that they've. Made their final recommendations at the at the federal level, so we can continue that process. So that's basically, you know, what he'll be doing. And then in the meantime, you know, it just provides some continuity here and then when we get the new. Permanent Finance Director on board, then there may be a little bit of overlap there which will really, you know, help. You know, make it more seamless as it can possibly be. So that's what we're trying to do. And then in between now and then. You know, more than likely at the Finance Committee, you'll see myself and working with all the person Schumacher. You know, to continue to have those meetings. And then Mike and and even the Finance Department can, you know, generate the reports and do the. The supporting documents for those meetings like we always did. So the timing for us is actually not that bad, all things considered. Jamin did outstanding job of putting us in a position where. You know, we're in a good position in our TIF districts with the developers. He did some pre-audit work for us. He got utilities in a great place and Shannon, who took over the utilities finance roles. Is doing a terrific job down there, so all things considered, I feel fortunate. Given what, you know, you hate to lose somebody, especially that caliber. But I'm really pleased with the job that AJ and her team has done. To move the hiring process forward here, and this is an example of that.
Quick question, if I could, Tim?
Sure, go ahead.
The the difference there, the eighty, one hundred, obviously, the the twenty seven. Almost twenty eight thousand becoming out of his, the former director's. Pay, what was budgeted for his pay, where's the eighty two thousand gonna come from? Or eighty two hundred?
That's the difference between Jamin's existing salary. It's on the supporting documentation, Greg. So if you look on there, it says that. We are currently paying it down at the bottom, I'm requesting for the approval and it talks about the contract interim director. The total cost would be thirty six thousand, but then our former finance director's position is going to be open. That's twenty three thousand, so our difference comes out at eighty one sixty eight forty nine.
Oh, I thought that is a, is a. Debit or credit or anyways, I saw it as this, as an obligation rather than.
No, so all I'm doing is comparing.
All right, all right, okay, got it now.
Okay.
You understand that before, no I do, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, we think that's worst case scenario, it's possible that. We might be able to wrap things up sooner than ten weeks, we'll see how it goes. And we have some other unfilled positions, so budget wise, we still feel we'll be in a good place.
I actually was able to secure, if you'll look on there, it says that there's a range in there from. Ninety three dollars up to a hundred and twenty, I was able to secure. Mike Arnold at ninety three sixty per hour, so it's actually gonna be on the lower end, provided he stays.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion does carry, all right, thank you. Let's see, next item. Next few items are coming from the Personnel Committee. That would be all the person Reeves.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution R twenty three twenty twenty two. Authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the removal of the requirement to have an alder present at all interviews. If possible, an alder will be present for the hiring of a director level position and I so move.
I think I heard all the person Johnson, then all the person Reeves.
Sure, so there's several resolutions here this evening and most of you are aware that. Hiring has become especially challenging over the past months. So Director Gillingham and others in leadership, I believe, worked together in particular with the mayor. Just to talk about how could we mitigate some of the challenges that we're facing. And one of the, one of them was related to needing to have an alder present, as most of you know. Often we have other obligations and so we've really been holding up the show if an alder is not able to be present, so this just seemed to make sense. To, you know, eliminate that as a requirement. For every interview.
Thank you, anything you want to add, Director Gillingham?
Yeah, this has been a, as everybody knows, we're going through the great resignation of twenty twenty two. And this has really slowed down our hiring process and has been a frustration for us because trying to get an alder, when you look across your. Your group of fellow elders, there's not a lot that are available during the day. Candidates are used to intervening during the day, so it's been a real, real difficulty for us and has slowed us down. So we're asking to remove that. In the event, like I said, if we can coordinate to get a alder there for a director level hire, we will definitely do that. But we're not going to, if possible, slow the process down, waiting to try to get someone to. To attend our, our interviews, especially at the director level, we're usually having more than one interview.
Yeah, and one thing we heard during exit interviews. Was the difficulty. It became for those that were left working here when somebody left. Because, you know, we're not, you know, like many organizations, we're not blessed with an abundance of staff. So when one person leaves, that means everybody else has to have more put on their plate. So AJ and I got together and we talked about some strategies that we could do to help facilitate the process. You know, we. We really intend to have it an alder present whenever possible. But this gives us the flexibility to keep things moving in case that can't occur. So, you know, we would always try to, you know, do what we can to to include somebody, especially somebody that's. On the Personnel Committee ideally, but certainly. You know, this isn't because we're trying to make things easier or get around something, this is to make things more efficient. And so we can get the positions filled. And and the other thing is, is, you know, AJ can give you the stats, but, you know, people that are coming in for interviews. More likely already have another offer on the table when they're here. And if we don't facilitate, we're gonna lose there as well.
And that example, not to belabor the point, but. When we were interviewing for IT positions, several of the candidates already had other offers on the table. The number that's out there right now that I've most recently heard is eighty percent of the candidates walking through either have an offer on the table. Or have already interviewed with another organization and are waiting on an offer. So we need to be able to move swiftly and move the process along so that we're not losing these diamonds that are out there.
All right, and President Hirsch has her hand up patiently, is she, I'm getting tired yet?
No, I just, you know, with. I I understand the the whole thing about moving swiftly, but it just. Are you looking for elders, any elder or only the elders that are a part, are a personnel that is kind of slowing the prod? Cause there are twelve of us here and I. Would think that one of us would be available at any time. At least one of us.
Interviews take place during the day, so.
Yes, a lot of us work remotely, so I think a lot of us would be available.
Okay, so we typically pull from the Personnel Committee because those individuals are aware of what's happening within Personnel. And have a little bit of background in that. But again, it's, we're looking for somebody, we're, we want individuals in there that are gonna add value to the process.
And if you, if President Hirsch or anybody else. Wants to be in the interview process and you know that you can bring that value, by all means, let AJ know. We would love to be able to include, you know, others in the process that might be available.
We would want to make sure before they attend that though, Tim, that they've been trained on questions that they can and cannot ask in the format.
Sure.
Make sure it stays legal.
So I would say if you're interested in helping out, by all means, reach out to AJ and she can go through that with you. You know, like I said, we're not trying to circumvent the process, we're just trying to make it efficient. But certainly if there's other people that are willing and able to do this, we would encourage that.
Yeah, I think, you know, I. Because it's very misleading when you say that you can't find an alder, when in fact you just couldn't find a personnel alder. So there may be a hierarchy that you have personnel and then you look for other. Elders that are, you know, could add value or, you know, that can be trained or maybe we, everybody needs to get trained. Because, you know, this is important and I do like. Kind of the oversight and the the ability for elders to be involved in the process for hiring directors.
And just so we can reread this, Regina, so you understand. An alder will be present for the hiring of a director level position, if at all possible. What we're asking for is to change at the line level.
Right, but you're only when you're, but what I'm hearing is that. When you're looking for elders that can be present, you're only looking at the four elders on personnel. when you're looking for elders that can be present, you're only looking at the four elders on Personnel. When you have eight other potential elders that could still be present during that interview process.
Greg's shaking his head.
What I was hearing was that you have four in your committee, in the Personnel Committee, that you look to first. And then, and then if you don't have a response there, or not a positive response, that the others are considered. Is that correct?
We have reached out to Phil.
I know you've, I know you've asked me before, too.
Yeah, I mean, we've called out, you're also looking at, you know, a department of two, and we're having to make all these phone calls as well, so again, we're trying to streamline things at the director level, if you want to change it, that says an alder will be present, that's fine, I'm just forewarning you that right now, timing is everything with candidates. But if you want to remove the if possible.
I guess, like, I would like it to be a tier effect, it's like, we will try to get Personnel elders, and then we'll do a second tier for other elders, and if none of those are available, then we can move, you know, without it. I just don't like this precedent being set that, you know, I know AJ, you're really good, and this is, but at some point, you might not be there, and there might be somebody else who just circumvents that, and then the elders don't have any say over this, you know, and so I'm just thinking ahead and making sure that whenever we change something, that we really look at what, how it could be misused, as opposed to the good intention that you have. And so I guess I would propose that you, we change it to the the, the HR would first look to Personnel elders, and if none available, go to the general, the other eight elders, and if nobody's available, you know, then you can do it without. But I like that we kind of safety net this for future.
Are you saying for all hires?
No, just for, at the director.
Okay.
Position, because they're not there for all hold hires, it's just mainly for the directors.
I had a question, if I could.
Sure, go ahead.
So I would be interested to know, from a practical standpoint, what sort of timeframe, because even though I chair Personnel, I can tell you that I might be at a doctor's appointment, or I might be working and not able to pick up the phone, and so I think we need to be realistic about how long someone from HR would spend. Do they call twelve, and then the first one that calls back? I, I just, from a practical standpoint, and knowing just the challenges we faced with the Finance Director, I, I just don't know how that would work, so I'd want some clarification about how, you know, how much time is this going to take, because the turnaround has to be, to me, like, an hour. You know, I just, I just know the challenges we're facing, particularly for directors who have headhunters. They probably have multiple headhunters contacting them, so I, time is absolutely really important, so I just, I'd like to know how we make that happen.
Right, but I don't understand, Lisa, with respect to if she's, if AJ is setting up an interview, she does it, she sets it up, and then she sends out, you know, blast email to the elders to see who's there.
No, that's not how it works, Regina. We first have to have the panel established, and based on the panel, we establish the date. Once the panel's established, then we go out and reach out to those candidates and fill the times in. So we can't move forward with a candidate until we have elders and the panel established.
You have to have a definitive elders at that time? Or just an alder?
We should have the alder determined. Because otherwise, I'm going to be moving forward and securing an appointment, potentially with all the alder secured. Because we've moved, perfect example is when we were hiring the Utilities Manager, that was a prior, it was a Director's level, we moved it to a Manager level, it was handled just like a Director. As we went through that process, we ended up having to wait a week in order to get everybody's calendars lined up. And that's what, in this day and age, that's where we're going to lose candidates.
Alder Person Jensen?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I think we're overthinking and complicating this. I understand Regina's concerns, and I do have some agreement with it. However, in this time that we live in right now, I think it, we need to give that flexibility to the, to AJ. And just move this forward, we can always revisit this sometime in the future when things settle down, if they ever settle down again. And the workforce changes with situations with, with trying to hire people, so I think for right now, it's a good idea to just, just go ahead and move this forward and streamline the process as much as we can, so we don't lose out on good qualified people.
Any other questions or comments?
Word. You gotta go.
So I don't know if Jean had a question, but I guess if things happen that fast, within an hour, if an alder doesn't get back to you within an hour, we don't have an alder present, I mean, it seems very I mean, is that the way it goes, it's that fast?
I can tell you right now, it is. We get the core put together of who's going to be able to be at the interviews. At that point, we start calling out to candidates. And we've moved appointments because we can't get an alder. So we'll move it to whatever day and time they can make it. So I don't want to call out, secure all these appointments with individuals, because we're usually interviewing three to four people at a time. And then I have to call them back and say, oh, I'm sorry, we're changing the date. It's going to be here, and there's only two of us trying to handle, you know, five to ten openings, and get these interviews moving forward, plus everything else that we do. So it's, if we can get the elders secured from the get-go, the way we've been doing it, we're not having to do all this rescheduling.
Anybody else have questions or comments? Okay, so we do have a motion on the table, so all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And anyone opposed?
Mayor, I did put that amendment in there, but I guess that didn't that it'd have to be the tier, but maybe it didn't get.
No, no second.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear an amendment.
And I, I said that I thought I made the amendment that it would be a tiered, where it'd be Personnel, then the regular elders, and then.
And there was no second.
Okay, well, the mayor doesn't even remember that. Put it out there, so.
I, I didn't, I mean, I heard the discussion, but I didn't hear an actual motion, so I'm sorry if I missed that. So what, you want to amend it, or what do you want to do?
No, whatever, I'm not comfortable with it, so I will.
Okay, then that motion does carry, then we'll go on to the next one. That one is R twenty-four. And this is also Personnel.
All right, thank you, Mayor, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to allow the Human Resources Risk Management Director the ability to update position descriptions that do not affect the grade level and reporting structure without additional approval. Changes that affect the reporting structure, compensation, and/or grade level must be reviewed and approved by the HR Human Resources Director and the Mayor, and I so move.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Doom, Alder Person Reeves?
And this was also brought up for a similar reason. You know, we're fortunate to have an HR Director, and part of her scope of expertise is to determine if changes in the job description warrant a change in a position or the reporting structure or grade level, and that sort of thing. But if not, we didn't see a need to sort of micromanage that. And again, if we can get the position posted more promptly, hopefully, we can get someone in for an interview sooner, and AJ, you may have something else to add to that?
Do, just to be real clear here, what happens after each position has been vacated, it's responsibility of the Director to go back through the job description and make sure that it's needed, first of all, that the position is needed. And then look to see if there's any changes to the duties that have occurred while that individual was in that position. What we're running into primarily is wordsmithing. You know, where they, instead of having each and every piece of equipment listed, they're saying heavy equipment. That's the primary piece, and I already have the authorization from you that if there's just a basic update, that's wordsmithing, that I can go ahead. What we're specifically looking for here is the changes that affect the reporting structure, compensation or grade level, that Tim and I will review those. And at that point, we're asking for the ability to make the authorization. Questions on that?
Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries, all right, thank you. Next one is R twenty-five, Alder Person Reeves.
All right, Resolution twenty-five twenty-two, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve elimination of the requirement to verify references during the hiring process. This resolution does not eliminate the ability to check references if a need should arrive. Arise, the city will continue to complete a background check for applicable positions, reference check information is limited to dates of employment and if authorized salary information. The purpose of this change is to eliminate steps in the hiring process that do not add value and slow the process, and I'm so move for approval.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Doom, thank you. Anything to add, Alder Person Reeves?
It's pretty straightforward, AJ might have a comment, but I, you know, just, I think, given the sheer volume of work that other HR departments are experiencing, I think, as I understand, our HR Department here has had difficulty even getting a return phone call. And partly because of liability and other things, some are reluctant to provide much information, as is indicated in the resolution, so I'm not sure how valuable it is in, in some of the positions that we're hiring for, but AJ, you may have additional detail?
No, Lucy, you've got it down, and that's what we discussed at our meeting. We're not seeing a lot of value, the biggest issue that we're having is people just don't call back, and then that holds us up on being able to make that offer, we've already run the background check. On the Director positions, the high-level manager positions, they're going through a more thorough background check. And the Police Department is looking at prior employment, verifying education. So it was redundant, but the biggest issue that we're faced with right now is just we can't get the calls back in a timely manner that we can then use that information. What Jenny and I were talking about for the past year, twelve months, first of all, we're not getting the calls back, but secondly, the information, we've never had it not match what we had gathered through the process of them filling out that information. There's also protections for us on the application process, where if there is information that's falsified, and we learn about that, we have the right to terminate employment. So we're covered from that side, too. But again, this doesn't eliminate it a hundred percent, if we feel there's a reason that we need to check it, we will do it.
All right, any questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. The next two items are coming from Public Safety, they're both first readings, Alder Person Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor, the first one is Ordinance one twenty-two. It's repealing and recreating section ten dash three eleven through ten dash three nineteen of the Stoughton Municipal Code, chapter ten. Relating, excuse me, relating to minimum maintenance standards and outdoor storage. And I would move for approval, well, excuse me, this is first reading.
Do you want to cover the components, or?
Well, Rodney, I think you're still there, if you are, I think he could do a more thorough job than I could on this.
Sure, we've been working with the City Attorney's Office to try to develop a better set of tools to to enforce our minimum maintenance standards related to outdoor storage. You'll recognize, we're deleting it out of chapter ten and putting that standard into the minimum, into the public nuisance process. Public nuisance regulations in chapter fifty-eight actually outline a better process for us to go through an abatement process, or work with the property owner differently, so that's the change, taking it out of chapter ten and putting those standards into the public nuisance, chapter fifty-eight.
Thank you, Rodney.
Any questions on that? If not, we'll go right into chapter fifty-eight, then, this is also the first reading.
Okay, so then the next one is Ordinance two of twenty-twenty-two relating or repealing and recreating section fifty-eight dash one through fifty-eight dash thirteen of the Stoughton Municipal Code, chapter fifty-eight, relating to public nuisances. And this, of course, is related to the one prior to that, and Rodney, if you want to help out on this, please.
Again, I think it's just moving the standards from chapter ten to fifty-eight and giving us a better avenue to make make corrections out in the field if necessary with property owners.
All right, anything you want to add, Attorney Rodney?
Well, I think Rodney summed it up fairly well, we have been working with the Planning Department on trying to develop a better process for dealing with nuisance, to several different kinds of situations that have been ongoing challenges. Generally speaking, calling them nuisance properties, but anything from a building that is in need of repair, to a problem with outdoor storage, to a lack of maintenance, and so these changes were basically made after reviewing the existing ordinances and trying to to improve them, to allow us to, as Rodney said, do do a better job, have some better tools available to pursue these kinds of issues. If there are any specific questions about the language, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions or comments from elders?
I had a question. It's Lisa, if I could. Is, and this actually came up as a question to me recently, and I someone was asking, and I couldn't find it in here, so I'm wondering if it went away, or if it's in a different ordinance, but someone asked me if outdoor those kind of tarp structures are allowed, you know, to and I was thinking they were not, but I'm wondering if it's here or elsewhere, or if that was changed, if someone, that might be a Rodney question.
Generally not allowed, zoning regulations outline the standards related to those, so generally, those are not permitted.
Okay, so that was in zoning, thank you, and then the other one was just on fifty-eight point eight, number eleven, I wondered if that was a placeholder, or if that, it says reserved, so I wonder if that meant, if it's a placeholder, or if it's means something that I'm not understanding.
Rodney, are you able to pull that up, so we can look at it?
I'm working on it.
Or Tim?
Yeah. Fifty-eight point eleven, so it's right after.
It's actually fifty-eight. It's actually fifty-eight point eight, number eleven.
Fifty-eight point eight.
There we go. Whoop, I think, was that it?
Number, all right.
Yeah, I guess I can't tell you the history behind, that, that's the way I think it's, it is in the code today. Says reserves today. And so we just left it that way. Um, there's probably a reason historical for why that was. Um, uh, set up that way and I just don't know why.
I was wondering if there might be related documents that would have called out twelve. And by eliminating the reserved one or not having it there, if other documents might have been affected. That was the only thing I could think of. But I have no proof whatsoever.
Yeah, that's possible. Again, I uh, I don't know.
Fair enough. If it's supposed to be there, I just thought, I wondered if it maybe was a typo. So, thank you.
Well, we'll take a look at it. These are first reading. So if we, we find something, we'll, we'll plug it in there. Or if it's appropriate, we can move twelve up to eleven or whatever.
I think, Tim, if, if, uh, if you do just happen to look through um, quite a bit of the municipal codes. You'll see a reserved in there uh, appearing quite often. So um, I, I think it's just. You know, somebody had a, a, something in there before and they just pulled it out. Or it was, they were reserving that for uh, something to, to be added in the future, but it never was. So I, I, I don't think it's uh, yeah, I don't think it's a big, uh, a big deal or anything to be concerned with.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Uh, if you think of anything, both of these will be back in uh, a couple of weeks. And it looks like um, the next item is, oh, there's actually three altogether. Um, so I'll get to the third one here. And all the person Jensen, you can introduce the third one.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's ordinance three of twenty-twenty-one. Actually, that's wrong. That should be ordinance three of twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
Amending chapter seventy dash one seventy-six, the city Stoughton Municipal Code by creating section eighty-eight. Uh, relating to no parking anytime, both sides of Jackson Street from Highway fifty-one West to the city limits. And this is first reading. And uh, not sure if the chief is there with us, but uh, this is um. Uh, basically a public safety issue, uh, trying to keep this be, being a major artery. Uh, trying to keep this open and safe for uh, drivers and all on you and the public. So Chief, I'm not sure. Are you there? You want to comment on this?
Yeah, I'm here. And also in addition to that, there are bike lanes on both sides of the street.
Right.
In that area. So that's one of the considerations for, for having any parking.
So this is the area heading into Kettle Park West?
Is from.
Right into the Meadows.
Yeah, this is from Highway fifty-one, west on Jackson Street, all the way to the city limit. Or at the current time, the end of the road.
All right, any uh, questions or comments on this one? All right, and I think this is just kind of a proactive measure. We know there's gonna be some development going on there this year. So um, getting this done now, I think will, will serve us well going forward. Um, next item is also coming from public safety and that one is uh, resolution ten. And I'll pull that one up.
Yeah, gotta point that up here.
All right.
Okay.
That's not it?
No, that's wrong here. A second.
Uh, it should be Oak Opening.
Yeah, Oak Opening, but if you pull it up, it comes up as uh, the same one we just read.
Yeah, okay. Well, you can read the resolution. I'll see if I can find it.
Okay, I'll just take it off the agenda. Yeah, get down there. Okay, this is resolution ten of twenty-twenty-two, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to amend section seventy dash one seventy-six. To designate Oak Opening Drive as a through street and I would move for approval.
Is there a second?
I think Fred on that one. Thank you. Yes, this is uh, what was uh, at our uh, one, our January twelfth meeting. Uh, it was approved by Public Safety Committee on a six to zero vote. Um, let's see, uh, Chief, I guess uh, anything you have to say on that, please?
Yeah, by design, igniting uh, Oak Opening, it becomes a main artery, which is what it's uh, intended to be through the. Whole Nordic Ridge and then connecting on northward to the fifty-one development. Um, it, it allows us to control cross traffic without having individual resolutions for site uh, for stop signs on all cross streets.
So what is the definition of a through street?
Well, you're gonna make me pull up the ordinance to look?
I'm sure Rodney knows off the top of his head.
You, you're giving me too much credit, Mayor. I don't have that.
Okay. I think typically they're wider though, aren't they?
Well, it's, it's more for the, for traffic movement. Um, a, a main artery is what we use on all of our. You know, we've done this similarly for whole avenue when we extended whole avenue to the south. Um, it's designed to be a main artery for the city and, and it, it, it helps us avoid having to come in with ordinances. For each uh, stop sign that affects cross traffic. So automatically all the cross traffic is stopped. Um, then we only, other concern we have is if we have uh, you know, crossing artery streets where we might want to put a four-way or something like that. So it's really a, a, a simpler version of uh, you know, signage for the streets that allow us to designate that as. As, as a main artery and, and provide for the, the cross traffic control.
Yeah, and not that I want to get into sidewalks, but it seems like the sidewalks are more of a priority on a. You know, on a, on a through street that they might be on some others as well, if I recall.
Well, from a through street standpoint, it, it doesn't have a bearing on sidewalk, so. Uh, but hopefully, you know, most of our through streets, you know, cover those main arteries that are used in the, the city to move traffic.
All right, any questions or comments before we continue to see any more on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Hi.
Any opposed? All right. Next item is resolution eleven. And that one is coming from Public Works, all the person Mieski.
This is our eleven of twenty-twenty-two, acceptance of public improvements for Nordic Ridge Phase Four. Is approved by Public Works on the twentieth and I so move.
Second.
Second by all the person Reeves, all the person Mieski.
This is um, basically, we are taking over the. Uh, improvements that were done by the developer at Nordic Ridge in the phase for the development. And that includes, I believe, um, some retention ponds and a few other things. Rodney, you can fill in if I, whatever I missed.
I think you've done, done well. Um, as part of the development agreement, it outlines a process for us to accept public improvements. After the work has been completed, inspected and lien waivers have been obtained for the work and this has met that standard for acceptance.
All right, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Hi.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, next item is a similar item, all the person Mieski.
This is resolution twelve of twenty-twenty-two, acceptance of public improvements made by Kettle Park West LLC. For Kettle Park West, the Meadows Edition Phase One. Uh, but works approved for zero on the twentieth also and I so move.
Second.
All right, was that Caravallo? I didn't quite catch that.
I think it was Ozzy.
Oh, okay, thank you. Second by doing all the person Mieski.
So this is again, uh, accepting of, of a public improvements that were done by the developer in Kettle West. Everything is what they said it was going to be and we will be taking over those improvements.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is coming from Act of Finance Committee. All the person Schumacher.
All right, our thirteen of twenty-twenty-two, authorizing and directing proper city official to enter into an agreement. With Harvest Farms LLC for construction of Phase Five and Six of the Nordic Ridge Platte. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Hunt. Uh, looks like it also went through Public Works and see that right away. All the person Schumacher, you want to cover it? And then if you miss anything, all the private person Mieski can fill in the blanks.
Yeah, this is just the continuation of the further phases in uh, the Nordic Ridge Development. Um, five and six, I thought they, they had accelerated a little bit with, with one of them. Is that right?
That's correct. They were originally gonna just proceed with Phase Five, but they are in a position to move forward with both Phase Five and Six this year. And that actually will finish all of the construction within Nordic Ridge.
All right, any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And any opposed? Not opposed, that motion carries. Last but not least, um, next item is uh. We're looking to authorize city officials to enter in an agreement with Matthew Fleming for the Delta Project. And I guess I'll let maybe Rodney start out and then Matt, you can kinda uh, fill in the blanks here while we're seeking this.
Well, the city's been approached about a potential development um, along Glacier Marine Drive at the edge of the city limits. Along Williams Drive. It's currently not in the city limits. Um, the project specifics are not completely known yet, but it would require us working to, uh, working with them. To potentially annex the property and go through an urban service area amendment, as well as a development agreement. Um, currently, uh, City Attorney Dragney is unable to assist with that legal representation. Due to a potential conflict with that, that potential developer. Therefore, we're seeking outside counsel to assist with the initial phases of that project review. We don't know how far it's gonna go, uh, might not gather legs at all, but at this point, we're just initiating the process. One of the first things that we'd be looking to do is wo- work with this, uh, this attorney to put together a cost recovery agreement. So that legal fees and other things could be reimbursed by the, the potential developer.
And this, this is Matt. I'll just add, the reason I have a conflict here is that. Uh, this same entity has been working with the city of Sun Prairie to cite a project in the city of Sun Prairie. On, when I saw this, when, when Rodney and the mayor sent me an email from Baker Tilly. That, which is a consultant working with this developer uh, describing this project and their interest in working with the city. It looked to me like it might be the same project that they're pursuing in Sun Prairie. So we asked him if it is. We asked the consultant, is this the same project you're pursuing in Sun Prairie? And he said it is. So because I've been working with Sun Prairie for some period of time on uh, on this project, essentially. Sun Prairie and Stoughton and I, there may be another community they're looking at, are all potentially competitors to um. Uh, with respect to uh, this project. And so I can only represent one. So that's why um. We are presenting you with uh, another lawyer who has experienced it in, in municipal law and in this kind of work. To, to represent the city.
All right, any questions or comments? So as Rodney mentioned, basically, we'd just be paying this other firm up into a point where, you know, we know whether or not. We need to retain their services or maybe at some point Matt might even be able to take over the conversation. And you know, the, you know, the developer would, would pay the cost regardless. So that's kinda where we're at on it. Um, all the person Hunt, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering kind of the uh, size and scope on this a little bit. I mean, is this a uh, commercial, residential, uh, many, many acres, a small development? Kinda the parameters on this little bit or is it too early for that?
It's, it's a little early to get into details because we don't even know them all, but it's adjacent to Glacier Marine Drive. Which is an area that's intended as part of our comprehensive plan as an expansion of our industrial park. So it's not a residential project. It would be one, it would be potentially a manufacturing and or industrial. Um, in, in the, the size and the amount of land that might be involved is still, still in flux. But generally, that's, that's the character of the operation.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So I guess, you know, we're looking for a motion to be able to engage with this, this other firm, uh, just in case, you know, this thing moves forward. We've had some initial, a couple of initial meetings and we really felt we shouldn't go any further until at least we get this in front of the council.
I would make that motion, Your Honor.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, I didn't catch the second, I'm sorry.
Either uh, President or myself, either one.
Give it to Brett. Fine.
Okay, so I just send in Schumacher. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right, it's twenty-eight items. That's a pretty good night's worth of work.
I'm kidding.
Yeah. I think that's all we had on the agenda.
I would make a motion to adjourn then.
Second.
Second by Reeves. And before we adjourn, I just wanted to thank uh, Candy. It took a lot of effort to put this agenda together. It was a huge agenda and we got most of it right. So apologize for the typos, but we're, we're working on some processes. To tighten some things up. Um, so you'll hear about them when we get them in place. But um, certainly a shout out to her and her team for getting this agenda together, especially when we've been short staffed here in City Hall. We're still down, um, not only in the finance department, but really in the clerk's department as well. So uh, kudos to them for doing that.
Thanks Candy.
Otherwise, uh, all in favor to adjourn?
All right.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Have a great night. Thank you.
All right.
Hey, well, everyone.